Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 24th City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, grab a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Morsut.
Here.
Odie.
Here.
Paige.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the September 10th.
I move the approval of the minutes.
Second.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
My mind just went blank. Okay, now we start the approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for approval of the bills in the amount of $1,195,969.49, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience that they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time.
Anybody?
Nope, okay. We'll move on to, our fire department's gonna give us a report, and Chief Nelson's here to fill us in.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, each year in September, we'd like to give you an update on the fire department, and it seems every year, we kinda take a part of the fire department, whether it's inspections or fire prevention, we focus on that. You can pick up a lot of the information on the fire department in our annual reports, which is posted online, but tonight, what I'd like to do is invite Neil Engel, our Truck Committee Chairperson, to talk about how we acquire capital items. It's not really outlined in our annual report, but it's something that we feel that we are trusted to do our due diligence, and we'd like to have Neil just explain it to you, and it's also appropriate, because we're gonna ask you for a truck later on today, so... So, without further ado, Neil?
Thank you. I'm Neil Engel, I'm the Chairperson for our Truck Purchase Committee, been on the Fire Department for about nine years now, and, let's see here, I'm gonna take you through our basic acquisition process. We follow this process for nearly all of our purchases. The smaller ones obviously go through much faster through the process than the larger ones, but it's roughly a seven-step kinda procedure that we follow. So, when we go through the acquisition process, we establish a committee of firefighters, could be rank-and-file firefighters, or it could be officers. In this case, our Truck Committee, we had eight members of the department that were on that committee, and we start out by determining the mission for the particular item that we're going to be looking to acquire, and we lean on our officers for defining that mission. So, in the case of our fire trucks, what are the specific goals that we're looking to achieve in the spec of that particular piece of apparatus? And then we move on to identifying what kind of equipment capabilities are we looking to improve upon versus what we have today? And there, we really start to bring in the voice of the rest of the members of the Fire Department. And one of the tools that we used for that process was we created a department-wide questionnaire, where we took specific items that the committee had questions on, brought in some examples of different types of capabilities that the manufacturers can provide, and asked for the department's feedback on their thoughts regarding those capabilities, the pros and cons that they saw, that maybe we, as the committee members, may not have been thinking of. And so, from there, we were able to answer some questions that we had within our own committee meetings. From there, we typically go on, and from that feedback, we start engaging with potential suppliers, manufacturers of the equipment, dealers, those sorts of personnel, and start looking at recent deliveries for fire apparatus, perhaps talking to local departments on their recent purchases, looking at equipment that they may have purchased, that sort of thing, to see what kinds of capabilities they have brought to their own departments, and whether or not those sorts of capabilities would be beneficial for ours. After we have done that, we move on to creating our specification, and the specifications could be relatively, relatively simple to create, or in the case of a fire apparatus, a fire truck, they can be pretty lengthy and have a lot of detail associated with them. And depending upon the scope of the project, we may do things like create a preliminary spec, bring in the suppliers, have them review our preliminary spec, and that spec might be our, you know, everything in the kitchen sink kind of a spec, and ask them to create a ballpark price for that, take us through any manufacturing issues that they may encounter based on how we have that vehicle configured, or that product configured, and then ask them about specific pricing for options, so that if it's above our target price, and generally, that preliminary spec is above our target price, then we can have some feedback on, well, if we remove certain items, can we get below our target price? From that, the committee then kinda puts their heads together, and we create our finalized specification, and work with the city administration to publish that for bids. And after we have received our proposals back from the manufacturers, then we go through a very lengthy process of doing the bid evaluation. We take our specification, we break it down by each individual line item, and we take the corresponding proposal line out of the proposal document, and put it in side-by-side, and see whether or not we believe that they're conforming to our required specification or non-conforming. And then from that, then we send out questions back to them. In some cases, it's just an error on their part, in some cases, they can't comply with what we're requesting, and in the cases where it's errors, they may come back and be able to comply, but there might be a price impact to that. And so, that all gets rolled up in our evaluation, including the price, and then we sit down and, as a committee, then develop our proposal to the Fire Department as far as our recommendation. And part of that evaluation also includes a inquiry with the city garage, in terms of things like maintenance items, and their relationships with the suppliers for supporting them on service parts and those sorts of things. So then, from there, we would bring, after we review it with the Fire Department, and the department finalizes their recommendation, we would bring it here to City Council. And so, tonight, what we're coming to City Council for is to recommend the purchase of a new fire apparatus. We had two proposals submitted by two different manufacturers, and the one that the Fire Department is recommending is the proposal from Pierce Manufacturing out of Appleton, Wisconsin. This truck is gonna have 1,000 gallons of water, it's a little bit greater than the last truck that we bought, this truck is targeted to be, have higher levels of structural firefighting capability, it's gonna have a 1,500 gallon per minute fire pump with fire suppressing foam capability, we're gonna have the ability to carry more hose on the truck, which allows us to have, be able to lay in more attack line, put in more supply line, more than we're able to carry today on our apparatus. And then we have additional discharges on this unit, and the real benefit, one of the biggest benefits is that this truck is gonna be very closely matched to our Engine 15, which we purchased just a few years ago. So, from a training perspective, you'll be able to go from one apparatus to the other, and will be very familiar in operation. A sales drawing for the proposed fire apparatus. A few of the differences that are on this one, we have an exterior ladder rack on this truck, our previous unit has a ladder stored inside the body. By going with exterior ladder rack, it gets a little bit taller, but it also allows us to carry more water. With the additional discharges that we have on there, we'll have more capabilities for more firefighters to be able to do more of an attack on a fire than we can currently. And, but outside of that, these two trucks are gonna be, this truck is gonna be very similar to the one that we recently purchased, same wheelbase, same chassis, same turning radius, very similar acceleration and power, and so, as I mentioned before, the familiarity is gonna be very, very much the same between the two. So, from there, I'm opening it up to any questions that you might have regarding the acquisition process, or the fire truck that we're asking for.
I have one question. I appreciate the over 200 hours and 15 months put into this, I know it's a lot of work, and this is kind of a smaller question, but is there a warranty comparison at the end of this? And I know there's probably a bigger impact savings, I'm just curious if there was a warranty comparison.
There is. We broke out, in our bid evaluation, we compared the warranty proposals from both manufacturers that submitted proposals to us. They typically have it broken down in various sections, they don't just give you one warranty. So, the cab comes with a warranty, the chassis comes with a warranty, the engine, the transmission, the axles, that sort of thing, but we laid those all side-by-side when we did our evaluation. Thank you. You're welcome.
Do we have equipment from these companies now?
Pierce Manufacturing provided us, manufactured our last engine for us, and they manufactured our ladder for us.
Okay, so we have experience with them?
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions? On the fire truck? Sure, go ahead.
Have you seen need for bigger and better metal water?
Well, this truck, our last truck, we built it to have structural firefighting capabilities, and the fire pump, the foam suppression, all that is identical to what we have on this one. But the last truck, we also built in greater capabilities for things like vehicle extrication, technical rescue, those sorts of capabilities that we didn't have before. So, with this latest apparatus change, because we are taking out a older unit that had greater fire suppression capability, we wanted to make sure we replaced it, one that had not only similar capabilities, but expanded capabilities.
Neil, maybe, or Chief, if you wanna talk about it, maybe you could just touch on the equipment replacement plan, and how old Number 7 is, and why we're replacing it. If you wanna touch on that, maybe that might help answer some of the questions.
Well, the fire truck that we're replacing is 31 years old. NFPA has a recommendation about the retirement of vehicles, and NFPA is the National Fire Protection Association, they provide the guidelines that fire departments typically follow in the purchasing and the requirements regarding apparatus. Engine 7, because of its age, is significantly behind where we are today with NFPA requirements for safety, for fire suppression, those sorts of things, and, you know, because of its age, it typically takes more maintenance, doesn't have the level of capability that we, that we're looking to have, and so, we're at the, really getting towards the end of life on that particular piece.
Okay, anybody else? Okay? Well, thanks Neil, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
You might as well.
Okay. Well, since he's got me up here, next Monday is our open house, and the public is invited. We start at 6 o'clock, and it runs to 8 o'clock. We'll have a variety of fire safety displays, we're planning on having some hazmat and specialized rescue activities involved. We typically always have some vehicle extrication and car fire, this year, we're gonna incorporate car fire demonstrations. We will be talking about proper use of fire extinguishers, there's a variety of kids' games, prizes, giveaways for the children, we'll have all of our apparatus on display, and it's a real good opportunity for people to come down, see our equipment, see what we do, learn more about the kinds of things that we do as a department, and, you know, we're always looking to answer any questions that people might have regarding our equipment, our training, the processes that we go through to become members on the Fire Department, and, so yeah, everybody's invited.
Smokey's gonna be there.
Oh, that's right, Smokey's gonna be there. How could I forget?
Okay. Thanks Neil.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, Assistant City Administrator, Brad Johnson, will give us a little report on the 2019 citizen survey results.
I guess I replace you, Julie, so...
Sorry, Assistant to the City Administrator.
He can hand out promotions when he wants.
You just got promoted, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Tonight, we'll go over a brief rundown of the 2019 citizen survey. Gotta make sure this is on. Hope that pointed down, I think. Headed on wrong. There we go. So, every other year, oh boy. Every other year, the city, in conjunction with the National Research Center, or NRC, conducts a comprehensive citizen survey, and then many of the questions that were on the citizen survey this year were also on in 2017, and so, this is in order to measure trends. In June, 1,700 surveys were sent out, and from that, you can see a distribution map of where those surveys were sent, and then from that, we had 477 respondents. Out of that, that was a 29% response rate, which is for a city of our size, pretty fairly average, and then pretty consistent with our past city surveys as well. So, this, the timeline for when the surveys were sent out were from June to August of this year, and then in this, there's a representative sample, when looking at the results, and there's a margin of error for about plus or minus 5%. And then we also had a online survey as well, which residents could reply to, and we posted it on our city website, and also on our city Facebook page, and then from that, we had about 133 respondents, and then from that, we had 92% of those respondents said that it was positive for the city of, as a place to live, 75% positive for the overall quality of city services, 84% positive for the overall image or reputation for River Falls. NRC compiled five reports that you received at the last council meeting, and then you can tell them on there, or in the packet that I provided you tonight. From that, in the term, we use a term, percent positive, so that's just taking the terms good and excellent, and just making it in one term essentially, so when we say positive, it's the mixture of that. For just the sake and purposes, we're not gonna break down the entire survey tonight, because there's a lot of information to break down, but from here, we'll just talk about the community livability aspect of it. NRC identified eight facets in there. Respondents identified safety, economy, and natural environment as priorities for the River Falls community the next two years, and those three were rated very highly, in conjunction with the rest of the national benchmarks, and then in conjunction, from 2017, residents said economy and natural environment from last year. From here, the results of the survey show that 90% surveyed thought the overall quality of life in River Falls was positive. So, when looking at the pillars in the community, 94% positive for the city as a place to live, 87% positive for the overall quality of city services, and 74% positive for sense of community. So, in comparison, from the 2017 survey, it was 93% positive for the city as a place to live, 88% positive for overall quality of city services, and 75% positive for a sense of community. So... Municipality participating in the National Community Survey is also allowed to submit several questions in the survey. So, one of the special questions that the city staff had, that council had asked on the survey since 2013, has been, have you had any in-person, phone, or email contact with an employee of River Falls in the last 12 months? And rates the city employees among those who had contact, benchmarks, knowledge, responsiveness, courtesy, and overall impression. So, the percentage of residents contacting city employees has remained fairly consistent from 2013 to 2019, with a rate of about 59 to 64%. Residents were also asked to gauge the level of support for relocating the city compost site at its current place, and about three-quarters, so about 74% supported keeping the compost site where it was, while one-quarter wanted it to be moved to another location. Council members and city staff also thought it was important for surveyed residents' opinions on housing affordability, and if respondents supported increasing housing density in River Falls. About six in 10 respondents, about 62% or so, thought it was essential or very important to increase housing density, and/or provide differing housing options to try and keep housing costs low. Council members have also mentioned that the community as a whole has been experiencing growth, and want to ask residents how they felt about the growth, and how the city's been communicating with the public on local government matters. So, respondents agreed overwhelmingly, about 92%, that River Falls' growth is positive for the community, while about three-quarters, 74% or so, agree that the city does a good job of informing its citizens on local government matters. But of course, looking at the survey, there's some opportunities for the city to address, namely, housing and affordability. So, only one-third of respondents said River Falls was affordable, had affordable quality housing, approximately half of respondents indicated that there were excellent or good housing options in River Falls. About approximately half of residents said the cost of living in River Falls was excellent or good. So, these are items that are growing concerns throughout the country, and River Falls really isn't an exception to that trend. The questions regarding housing indeed substantiates the Housing Study and Needs Report that was conducted earlier, indicates a need for more diverse housing options to be explored or built in River Falls. But overall, things are looking good. We rate it very positively compared to the national benchmark for other cities of our size, and we'll take this information from the 2019 survey compared to the 15 and 17 survey for our department heads and community partners, and after tonight, we'll post the citizen survey online, the website located there, and if there's any other questions, I'm gonna answer them, hopefully.
Quick question, on the affordable housing topic, a high percentage of people seem to be okay with increasing density. Did we get any feedback on housing type?
Not particularly. I would have to look more into it and see if we had that specific question, but we kept it general in that sense, so...
But that's a pretty high percentage.
It was, yes.
If I may, you know, I think it kinda goes hand-in-hand, when you're talking about higher density, then we're gonna have to start looking at public services as in police, because any, you know, I live in a neighborhood, you know, it isn't just the only neighborhood in the city of River Falls that has a little bit of a moderate to higher density, and, you know, you definitely get more community complaints, and you get a lot more community involvement going on, kinda good and bad, right? So, I think we need to really kinda fine-tune that a little bit more, because there's a lot of people that live in these neighborhoods, that we might go put in a higher-density apartment, and how's that gonna impact them? How are they really gonna feel about it? Do they really understand the impacts of putting something of higher density into a single-family unit resident? I mean, that's, there's a lot of different variations and variables that can come into play in there, so I think if we move on more of those, we gotta be careful.
Anybody else got anything for Brad? Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. So, I'll close the council hearing, and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2019-10. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 5.08.14 for the operator's license. This is a second reading and disposition of an ordinance to amend Municipal Code, Chapter 5.08.140, to reflect that the city will follow Wisconsin state statutes, which clearly define the guidelines when granting, renewing, or revoking operator's license. Anybody in the audience has anything to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2019-10.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Question. When we agree to just follow Wisconsin statute, how do we know when they change things? Do they notify us of change? So, in other words, if they change this statute, how do we know what the rules are?
Yeah, it's typically tracked by two groups in the state, one is the municipal attorneys, and the other is city clerks, municipal clerks, so they've, they have some joint materials that they develop, the league has materials, but there's always activity every year, there isn't always changes every year to the law, but anything involving alcohol in Wisconsin usually has a lot of attention, so we're aware of it as it comes down the path. We would, if there was something that we thought was not just a technical change, if there was change in the state law that we thought the council wanted to be aware of, then we would make you aware of that, because obviously, by adopting the statutes, statutory language, you frankly don't have much ability to vary from state law anyways in this area.
So, Scott, essentially, this falls under state compliance, but it does allow for an appeals process that still exists within our own municipality, correct?
Yeah, I believe that's the case.
Okay, good.
And there's a requirement in the statute that if you deny or revoke a license, that, excuse me, that there is an appeals process offered to the person whose license is revoked or denied.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else?
Quick comment, so just to clarify, we're not simply referencing the state statute, we're adopting the language of the state statute into our own municipal ordinance, correct?
I believe as I read it, it just changed the existing ordinance to refer to the statutes and not to incorporate the language into the ordinance.
So, you're using the guidelines under state statutes, instead of referencing a separate city council guideline document, which you've been advised, I think, that we have some limited ability to really have our own guidelines anyways.
Thank you.
If I may just add in, you know, I think a lot of this comes back, this isn't necessarily just our issue either, it's kind of a state issue, obviously, because it is, we're following state statute, but it's a great picture into fair employment practices, and making sure that people are being represented fully by their city governments, state governments, if they make a mistake, that they can actually go out and get a job down the road, not based off of one mistake, but if they have a repeated history, that's when we can start using that against them. You know, I think we recently had something like that here, and it kinda came to fruition, and I really appreciate the staff's time of taking that extra step and making sure that we're doing right by the people that work in our community, so I wholly support this.
Okay, got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to consent agenda. First is, we'll acknowledge the following minutes, Utility Advisory Board from 8:10, the West Central Wisconsin Biosolids Facility from 7:18, the River Falls Housing Authority from 8:14, the Plan Commission from 8:06, Historic Preservation Commission from 8:14, and the Police and Fire Commission from 3:06. Next is Resolution approving contract for reevaluation and assessment services. This would approve a contract for an interim market update and a maintenance assessment service for 2020 through 2022 with accurate appraisals incorporated. Next one is Resolution approving an amendment to the Historic Preservation Plan, and the last one is Resolution repealing Resolution Number 3804, Guidelines for Operating License. If the council adopts this final resolution, it'll need, it'll repeal, we will repeal Resolution Number 3804, which contains the current guideline of the city's clerk office and police department used in review of operator's license request, as it will no longer be needed since we're adopting the new ordinance 2019-10. Anybody wanna pull anything? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to ordinance resolutions. The first one is Ordinance 2019-11. This is an ordinance to rezone and amend future land use map for 1,300 South Main Street, and this is the first reading, this would, we would use, this is the first reading of ordinance to amend the official zoning map and future land use map to rezone 1,300 South Main Street from B3 Highway Commercial to... Main Street from B3 Highway Commercial to R3 multifamily high-density residential to support, to support development of a 50-unit multifamily structure. And the second reading is in our next council meeting on October 8th. And does the council have any questions about this?
I have one question. I'm just curious how the neighborhood feels about the overall feel of the project.
Yeah, if I might step in on that. I used to live right across the street from the old motel. I received a ton of complaints from folks while that motel was still standing and after it was torn down. Generally speaking, the community was, when are you gonna do something with this property? We had a lot of kids playing in and out of there, we had some mild drug dealing that was going on in that facility. And to kind of fast-forward through today, it's been leveled for a while, we've had a lot of tiger kickers. I've had a couple complaints that people weren't aware of, like the zoning stuff, and when are you gonna come send me a letter? Well, the next week, we sent them a letter, because we weren't quite at that zoning process yet. And everybody else in that neighborhood that I've spoken to is generally in favor of moving forward with a project like this. They've had some reservations on apartments as a large scale, kind of like we did next to City Hall, but generally speaking, most folks have been in favor.
What I like about this project is West Cap is an organization that'll actually have some oversight and keep this project in the good direction, so I'm happy about it, too.
So any questions about this for the council? No? Okay, move on to ordinance 2019-12. This is the first reading of an ordinance to amend official zoning map and the future land you ma, future land use map to rezone 805 East Division Street from R1 single-family low-density residential to B2 limited commercial to support expansion of the Bach &amp; Young Funeral Home. And there again, the second reading is scheduled for October 8th. Does the council have any questions? Okay, onward and upward. We will go to, this is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66.0703 of the Wisconsin State Statute for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. And before we go any further, Jolene Larson, who is the president of the board, of the bid board, will give us a little presentation.
Ta-da. I'm Jolene Larson. I'm the present, current president of the bid board. There are other members other than me, in case you're ever wondering, because I'm the only one that ever comes here. It is my pleasure to tell you what we've been up to each year. First of all, I want to thank all of you for supporting us last year. Thank you all for your help. We had a tremendous amount of city help this year, and it was all great. The kids helped me hang the baskets this year since my daughter's pregnant, so I didn't have her helping me, and so I'm getting too old to be lifting all that stuff, so that was great. Sam and Amy keep us on a straight and narrow path at our meetings, and it's great to have them there to do our minutes, to keep our packets good, and to make sure that you all get notified when we're having our meetings. And Zach stepped up to the plate this year. He's a master gardener, and he ran the Second Street Gardeners, so I appreciate all their help. It was wonderful. This year, we've been up to pretty much the same thing we do every year. Our task is to be good stewards of the money that we accumulate. Our bid assessment is about $45,000 per year. Out of that, we have about $4,100 that goes into what we call operating expenses. Those are things like our liability insurance, our post office box. We do pay the city $2,500 in administrative fees, which we've all decided is well worth it, because we don't have the time to send out the notices and do the meetings, and staff helps us quite a bit, so it's a small price to pay for all their help. And yes, Scott, I said that. We also have a printing budget and a website, some maintenance, but our expenses are pretty low. We're all volunteer budget. We no longer have a full-time staff. In 2000, we started in 1989. We did have a full-time person on staff. We rented a building, an office building, we had a truck, we had a lot of expenses. We also got about extra $20,000 from the city budget and monies from the Pierce County and St. Croix County EDCs. In 2000, our city, our person who was running the bid retired, and actually, we kind of took a look at it, and we were also not going to receive funds from the EDCs any longer, and we went to hire a person, and we realized that for our budget of $44,500, that very little money was going to be going into this project, that most of it would be in administration, and we decided that we should rethink our way we do business, and so we did. For the last 19 years, we've put over $845,500, and actually, you can add another $100,000 to that, because we had a $100,000 carryover from our first year. So we've almost put a million dollars into downtown River Falls, and I think it shows. We do things like sponsor the Music in the Park, which is a great event that brings people not only downtown on Fridays now, but it's expanded to Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, and I think it's because the whole community's come together and sponsored it. We do the hanging baskets. We now have 62 baskets hanging all over Main Street, the Division Street Bridge, the Walking Path, and the Maple Street Bridge. And our growers have been nice enough not to ever ask us for charges any more than the original $100 that we've paid for those, and I think that's a really good deal. We aren't looking at expanding that. We really don't have any more places in the bid board, in the bid district, to hang any more baskets, but they look wonderful. The bid district, if you don't know, if we start at the Dairy Queen and go east, we go down to Second Street on Cascade, it goes down, all the way down to Second Street. It only incorporates the businesses in that district, in that, on that street, in Second Street, and then it takes west to down Division, goes across the Division Street Bridge, Clark Street, then takes around the river, hits Fall Street, and then comes back down Cascade. So it's just the historic district of River Falls. Those businesses in that district pay an assessment or an extra tax, and that's where we get our monies. The average assessment is under $500, although we have about 10 or 12 people that pay between $500 and $1,000, and then we have five or six people that pay in four or five figures. It's assessed on value. So the only raise that we get in our funds is if the property values go up. We also do things like the River Dazzle Parade. We are lucky enough to have a great Chamber of Commerce in River Falls. They do the work for us, and we pay for that event, because we don't have enough worker bees, and it's been a great collaboration. That brings a lot of people downtown. We also do murals. We are working with the River Falls High School on doing a mural underneath the Walking Bridge, right out here, and we hope to have that done by next fall. And so we thought, rather than have that bridge, you know, right under the bridge where you walk past be all full of graffiti, perhaps if we got a mural on there first, maybe that would be a deterrent. We also are very proud to have spent, given the city this year our last $42,000, $4,250, which is our share of the wayfinding budget. We really appreciate your support on that project. I think a lot of people who lived here, especially the people who've lived there all our lives, know where everything is, and we kind of think, why do we have to have a bunch of signs to tell people where everything is? And I understand that, but if you look at it from a bigger perspective, River Falls is no longer that tiny town of 5,000 people. We get tons and tons of visitors here every year, and we spend a lot of money to get those visitors here. You have a room tax, you have a great tourism committee, or putting all sorts of events together, and when people come, they need to know how to find things. So I appreciate that you guys had the forethought, or everybody, had the forethought to kind of fund that project, and we're proud sponsors of that. The rest of the monies goes to funding what we call facade grants. We don't facade, we don't pay for inside improvements, we only do outside improvements. This year, we did, the Dollar General had put up his monument sign, we helped sponsor that. We did, the St. Croix Gas Company painted their building, the Dance Project, the Nutty Squirrel, we did that, and if the new hotel, or the right, the hotel has new, painted themselves new colors, and it really looks great. I, you know, if you haven't looked at it, it's beautiful. So every year, we sponsor as many projects as we have, it's on a first-come, first-served basis. Our guidelines are pretty much the city guidelines. If it meets the criteria of the city, we, there, we will fund it. We fund about 33% of the project, up to $7,000, and then we have a sign grant program for about $1,000 per sign. So that's what we've been up to, you've got our budget. Last year's, I think we talked about a survey, and this is hot off the press, we did survey our membership. It's a little hard to, we have a real diverse group of people to survey. You have the property owners themselves, you have the businesses that are inside those properties, and then you have some people that are both. So each bid board member took time out of their days to go to each person that was in those buildings, and then I wrote a personal letter to each building owner and wrote a personal note on each one, and tried to encourage them to take the survey. We've gotten 20 responses back. We probably have, I'm looking, I haven't done, we haven't really looked at this, the last meeting, I was, I wasn't at the last meeting, I was not able to attend, so we're gonna discuss it at our next meeting. We got 20 responses back. It's probably about 10% response rate, I'm guessing. 95% of them knew who we were, which was a good thing. A couple people said they weren't, I'm kind of wondering why. Most of the people were, of the responses, we didn't get any negative, which would be things like they were either neutral, or they were extremely satisfied. 78% of the people were extremely satisfied or satisfied, and then there were 23% that were just neutral. We also asked them about the things that they liked the best, the hanging plants, the Second Street Gardens, and the things that, of course, were here and established a long time were the ones that got the highest response. Things like the sign things and garbage cans were the lowest response, and I understand that, because that's not a whole, that's not that great or glamorous. We also buy, we also just wrote a check to the city for trash cans along the walkway, so for $2,400, and we'll do another $2,400 next year. So that's kind of what we're up to. I don't know if you've got any questions. I will make sure you get a copy of the survey, once I have a real copy to give you, in your next packet, and we're gonna discuss it at our next meeting.
Jolene, just to clarify, 10%, so there's about 200 affected properties and...
There's about 200 contacts, there's 100 actual building owners that pay the assessment, and then there's the folks that rent, and so we kind of talk to the, to both of the groups.
Okay.
Because we give money to both. You can be a building owner and get a grant, and you can be the building, a business that's inside the building and get a grant.
Find grants.
So it was kind of how to, how do we ask these people? So we kind of did everybody, and it's easier to contact them in person when it's the building, the person who's inside the building versus the owners. We have, you know, owners that live in California, Arizona.
Sure.
You know, so we wrote letters to everybody.
So when you made face-to-face contact with each, or your group made face-to-face contact with each of the business owners, was it a paper survey? Was it a Survey Monkey link?
They had to, we did a Survey Monkey, we also had a paper survey, and then we just could ask them the questions. Nobody wanted us to stand there and ask them the questions.
Understand, yeah.
So, which we, so most people said, oh, I'll do the Survey Monkey, and, you know...
Some did.
Some did.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My question is, every single business owner and property owner receive that survey?
Everybody received the survey, yes.
Gotcha, and you had about a 10% response rate, you said?
On the, of the surveys, all of them, yes. And we did every single business, because I, I got the list from Julie, and I handwrote on the envelopes so that they would open them up, so they didn't think it was junk mail, and I put a little sticky that said "thank you" on the back of them, and I wrote each one a note.
So when you get a response back from them, do you actually get, like, written notes from them?
They, they could.
Okay.
You know, I, most of them just went to Survey Monkey.
Right.
Yeah, and we did give an opportunity to talk to us. I mean, we did ask them if they would like to be on the board, if they had anything to ask. We did get comments back that we're doing a great job to keep up the good work, to keep the taxes low, you know, that kind of stuff, so.
No, I, you know, I think I mentioned this last year when we were at this, as I think I was one of the main proponents to push a survey, right? And it was nothing absolutely negative, just, you know, just like we go to the ballot.
And it'll be good, it's good for us to know. I mean, I was...
That's great.
You know, I wanted to know, especially, are you familiar with the bid board? Part of that has really been the cooperation that we're getting from city staff. The city staff is extremely good at referring businesses to us now, and that hasn't always been the case, but the last two or three years, they've been really attentive to when people coming in, finding them, not only bid money, but any kind of extra funding that the business owner can use. So they've really stepped up the game, and you guys need to know that. And so they, they really are a face now that we don't have a main, a Main Street office, you know.
So as I was gonna say, too, is some of my questions today were, did you guys do a survey, right? And you did. It was the first survey since 1988.
Probably the first survey ever.
Fantastic.
Well, we have, you know, we would have people come, you know, once a year, and we do a, you know, a meeting, but you always have kind of the same people show up, and it's the same, so yeah, we did do a survey, so.
I appreciate you.
Reaching out to your constituents, right? Because those are the people you represent, and making sure that you get a resupport on your movement, and, you know, I don't think anybody complains about the hanging baskets and the beautification, it's just, you know, when you get folks...
I think the concerns are always, you know, how we spend the money, especially in the grant process, because if there are businesses that you may or may not support, you may not want your tax dollars to go for those businesses. Our, our feeling is that if they meet the letter of the law and they meet the criteria that the city has set forth, we need to let those businesses become businesses, because there are businesses on Main Street today that some of us probably thought, oh, they'll never make it, and they're surviving, and there's businesses we thought, oh, this is gonna really take off, and they're not there. So you never know. So I think from a perspective, you need to be open and let people be in business, and if they meet the letter of the law, I think the city attorney will also agree that we need to let them, we need to give them, you know, the funds, we need to support them.
I guess I have one, one request. I think we're voting on the full resolution October 22nd. Can we get those results before then?
Oh, yeah, yeah. You'll have them in your next packet.
Awesome, thank you.
Do those results include trends from, from other municipalities that members might also like, too?
Pro, I can get, I can see if I can find you some information. You know, we are kind of a hybrid. We are not Wisconsin bid board any longer. We kind of do, I've spoken to many municipalities about what we do here in River Falls, it's a little different without a director, so I can see what the trends are, but we do not, we're not a Wisconsin Main Street community, so we do, you know, we're kind of a anomaly, you know. So when we started this in 2000, the Wisconsin person I spoke to actually wished me luck and told me that we were doomed, so I kind of like that I'm standing before you.
Thank you for doing the survey, and I look forward to seeing it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jolene. Okay, so I'll take a motion on that, yep?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special police powers under Section 66.070 of Wisconsin State Statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District.
Second.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, next is a resolution approving replacement of a fire engine. This replacement of a fire engine with the Pierce Manufacturing for $627,861, and it will authorize the city administrator to finalize negotiations with the vendor and sign on behalf of the city. Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the fire truck, to accept the fire truck bid.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Timing. If we approve this, what's the timing look like?
Almost forever.
300 days.
For every firefighter, it will seem like forever, but 300...
Forever, yeah.
Forever, yeah.
300 days is the contract amount.
Pierce said that they, they would do it within 300 days. Our bid specification was 400 days, and it depends on when we purchase it. Now, this is a 2020 purchase, and Julie and Sarah will have to figure out basically and come back to you as far as how the financing will go, but we'd like to order it within the next couple of months, so.
But we're looking at 2021, probably.
No, it'd be 2020. Neil, check that out, and it's, yeah. It, it would be probably September 2020-ish, Paul?
Question.
Go ahead.
Chief, I got a quick question for you, and it's a little premature, because we don't have the truck yet, but how much of the equipment today that we have on an existing truck will transfer to the other one, and how much new will we need? Maybe that's too premature to answer that at this point.
It is a little premature. You know, as Neil explained, we, we look at the mission, and we do have money set aside for, we call it loose equipment. And what the, the committee, their next step will be to evaluate items on Engine 7 that we can still utilize and repurpose for the new engine. So we'll be coming back and, and looking at that, probably more towards the end of the year. And that would also be a 2020 purchase.
Okay. And just for, point of reference, to put you right on the spot, how much did we spend to outfit 15 in addition to the truck? Do you remember?
It was, loose equipment was $25,000, and I believe that that was pretty close. And then we had extrication equipment on there, which is a separate kind of entity.
Yep.
And I'm trying to recall, that was about $45,000.
I remember 60 for some reason on my line, but, okay.
And are you planning on putting extrication equipment on this truck as well?
Yes, we are. But now, again, we're evaluating that. There's been a shift in, in technology, and they're going away from the hydraulic motor-operated tools to electric, believe it or not, you know, battery-operated. So they have their work cut out for them.
All right.
I got, I got one question. So when we get a truck of this size, right, because it's not just like a fleet vehicle, it's something that we're going to replace, what kind of overlay do we have from getting the new truck and keeping our old truck, just in case there's any kind of issues with a truck, and we have to bring it back and get repairs or anything modified?
Typically, what we would do is, is probably keep Engine 7 for maybe a month. We do have a backup, you know, as far as Engine 4 would move to the back of the, the line. But I would say, given Pierce's history and our history with the trucks that we've purchased, I'd say no more than 30 days before we'd, we'd get rid of Engine 7.
Awesome, thank you.
Chief, if you want to talk about, or have a member talk about, I mean, to the overlap question, analysis, you do have to, we do look at the fleet overall, and you have to make a determination about, do you need a second engine? And so the, the answer from the fire department immediately is yes, of course we do. Why do we need to look at that? But then they look at it anyways, and part of that is, you have vehicles that are out of service, right? So if you have a single piece of equipment that is the whole workhorse of the department, you're, there's some risk analysis there that has to be undertaken, so you, do you have more equipment right now, when everything is working 100% of the time, than you need to, to provide the response? Probably. You'd hope you'd have a little bit more, because you're always, there's things that are in, in repair or even just maintenance. Preventive maintenance on a fire truck is not like, it'll be back in 30 minutes, you know, after we change the filter. So you, you have trucks that are out of service for, for time, and then the bigger analysis that's going on, and is done in some informal ways, because of the knowledge and the network within the fire departments, is you even can't even always have enough equipment to have your own backups. So, you know, you're not going to have an extra ladder truck, because you're going to rely on the neighboring departments when yours is out of service. And then we, we do the, vehicle repair prioritization is different on a fire truck or ambulance than it is on a, you know, pickup truck. So we're going to maybe pay extra for overnighting parts. In, in case like this, these Pierce, sometimes, they, it's rare now that they have to go to Oshkosh, but...
Yeah.
Because they're, they can send technicians here. It's nice that we're in Wisconsin, they can do that, but sometimes wheels aren't driving straight, and it takes two days to figure out why the electrics, electromechanical feedback loop is not working right. There's lots and lots of wires on these trucks, so. The community should understand that the, and I watch this, too, because it's of interest to the administrator, keeping track on the budget. We're, we're looking at the apparatus fleet in total. It's not just Engine 7's up for due, and we need a new one, and let's not talk about it every time. Probably to an excruciating level, the fire chief has to, we have to talk through, and not just talk through, but look at analysis of why we do this. And same with the replacement cycle. 30-year replacement cycle on a NFPA truck that's, that's a 30-year recommendation is uncommon. A lot of departments of our size are probably scheduling them at 22 years or 24 years, and expecting the city administrator to drag their feet for two years and get it replaced in 26 years. But we're, we've stuck pretty close to our replacement schedule, because we think that's the prudent thing to do, so. It's something to celebrate, but it's a tool, not a toy, so.
Yeah, and our replacement schedule, I mean, we base that on, on our call volume, repairs, frequency of repairs, things like that, and, and sit down with the department members and say, well, how long can we stretch this out and, and still be safe? I mean, safety's our, our main concern. And we've kind of settled on the third-year number, and it's, it's worked well for us, or for me, for the last nine years, so. If we were a busier department, yeah, you'd probably look at 20 years, 25 years, so.
Chief, do you anticipate selling the truck that we're retiring?
That would be up to the city administration, but there are different avenues to sell it. We could auction it off or, or try to sell it outright. That wouldn't be something I, I get totally involved with.
Thank you. I do want to make a note that, that the truck bid came in for $22,000 less than the budgeted amount, so I appreciate that.
Yeah. The committee did their work.
Yep.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Chief?
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, so got a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to the administrator report. Anybody's got anything for Scott?
While you're thinking of your questions, I'll repeat that the fire department open house is September 30th from 6:00 to 8:00. And I think they were referring to the 75th celebration of Smokey Bear. And October 1st, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 is the Run with the Cops. So that is taking place. There's information on the SpecialOlympicsWisconsin.org website. October 7th through 12th is a fall cleanup for city residents and a highlight across the neighborhoods, so.
[laughing]
This is household items only, so this is not a hazardous waste event. This, this would be for, essentially, our large item cleanup. Monday through Friday, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., that's October 7th through 12th. Saturday is 8:00 to 1:00, and that is, in your core fee on your monthly bills to the utilities, so all, all residents that are paying that, that core fee, this is included as part of your service to do so. So we encourage people to take advantage of that. There'll be more information on the questions that you might have on the city's website at rfcity.org/cleanup. Finally, the 2018 to 19 Chamber Leadership Project was to install a 10-station fit trail into Sanctus Park that has a low-maintenance type of exercise equipment for self-paced, self-guided exercise, including year-round use. That group has raised $12,000, and the equipment has been delivered. So they're doing installation the second week in October, and the ribbon cutting is planned for October 17th or 24th. But they've been successful. I know there was, that's, that's a volunteer-driven project and fundraised project, and just wanted to let the group know, the council know, that they've raised the, the funds to do that, so look forward to that improvement to the parks. Be happy to take any questions you might have, before we try to race out of here before the storm, it looks like.
Scott, could you direct people, if they want to read the city survey, where they could do, do that online?
I would just go to the city's website. There'll be, for a while, it'll be in the kind of what's new area, but it's also, we typically have that under the government section, I believe you can find it, and also under the mayor and council area of the website is usually where it is. But as always, if you have any trouble finding it, you can just give us, or send us an email, and we'll forward you the link.
Okay. Anybody else got anything for Scott? Any questions or anything? Okay, we'll move on to the comp trailer report for August.
The comp trailer's report for August 2019. General fund revenues through the end of August were $8,73,156, or 74% of budgeted revenues. Revenues in August included $1,998,689 of final tax settlement. Expenditures for the same period were $6,342,675, or 58% of expense. Revenues over expenditures of $1,730,481.
Thanks, Dan. Okay, I would like to appoint Carrie Heinzelman to the library board to replace Melissa Wilson, who can't finish her term, and this would be through the remainder of July 2020.
I make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to the library board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.